And welcome to the Norw. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Norwalk Common Council at-large candidate debate. Thank you for joining us this evening as we present to you the candidates. As you can see, they're in their Brady Bunch boxes and ready to go. I'd like to thank Mary Oster for helping organize this event. Beth Segalbaum is our timer giveaway Beth. She's our timer and will be telling the candidates how much time they have. I am Laura Smith. I'm the co-coordinator of the League of Women Voters of Norwalk and I'm also the state president of the League of Women Voters of Connecticut. I'm so happy that we could all be here and present these candidates to you tonight. Our moderator this evening is Jean Rabanelle, a longtime league member, a longtime moderator for the league, a current registrar of voters in Jumbo, as well as someone who has been moderating and teaching us how to moderate for a long, long time. We are happy to have her back. She is one of our best moderators in the state and we definitely welcome her every time she comes. So please sit back, enjoy the candidates and Jean's going to explain to us the rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. This is a timed debate. Each candidate will have a certain amount of time to answer each question, but because there are so many candidates for the at-large seats or seat, it's not going to be done exactly the same way as it would be if everybody was being given exactly the same amount of time. By luck of the draw, the candidates have been given placement in three different groups. Group one is Mr. Merlusi, Mr. Boninvent and Mr. Burnett. The second group is Ms. Britton, Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Estrella. The third group is Ms. Najelski-Eichner, Mr. Johnson or Mrs. Johnson, sorry, and Mr. Santiago if he gets here. The people in the first group will get one minute to answer each question and then every yes.
Can I just ask, you didn't list my name?
I am sorry. You weren't on the list. All right, is it Smith or Sly?
Smith.
Smith, we're going to put you in group three.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
You mentioned Louis Estrella, I think, in there. That's that was your mistake. He's running out of district eight. You might have got him mixed up with Barb Smith.
That would explain a great deal.
They look the same.
Lists, not always accurate.
This is how we, this is how we keep it nonpartisan. Jean is from out of town.
And I have no idea what's doing what. All right. The way it's going to work is for the first three questions, the people who are in group one will get a minute to answer, and then everybody in groups two and three will get only 30 seconds. There will be only one rebuttal per candidate per night. So if you use up your rebuttal, that's it. On the next three questions, the candidates in group two will get a minute to answer and everybody else will get 30 seconds. And if we get around to beyond that, for the third group of questions, the candidates in group three will get a minute to answer and everybody else will get 30 seconds. And as I've said, it's going to be one rebuttal per night. There will be no opening statement. At the close of the evening, each candidate for the at-large positions will get a two-minute closing statement. You will get a 30-second warning when you're 30 seconds to the end and a stop sign at the stop. I should tell the members of the audience that all questions have been pre-submitted from the league and from the the members of the Norwalk citizenry at large. We will not be taking questions from the chat. I repeat, we will not be taking questions from the chat room. All right, that having been said, we are ready to start. And the first question is going to go to Mr. Merlusi first. And it is, what is your vision for future development in Norwalk? Mr. Merlusi, we can't hear you.
What was the question?
All right. What is your vision for future development in Norwalk?
I think it's, I think it's pretty simple. I think that the town has to decide, you know, what, what do we want to be? Do we want to be a city or do we want to be a town? And I think in talking to people out and about in Norwalk, there's a lot of pushback against a lot of the construction in town. I think it's pretty, it's pretty simple. And I think we need to assess that. Do we want to become more like Stanford? Do we want to retain this sort of feel that we're, you know, a large, a large town of several different communities for Waiton, Silver Mine, East Norwalk, South Norwalk. And I think, to be honest, it's a slowdown in construction. I think the apartment buildings are going up like mushrooms all over the town and it's, it's making the city, it's making the town a little bit less enjoyable to live in. There are more people, there's more traffic and it's probably creating, it's draining our infrastructure too. So I'd like a more aesthetically pleasing and more manageable town to live in.
All right, thank you. Same question to Mr. Boninvent.
You're on mute.
Thank you very much. I also believe that our town is being developed quite rapidly and a little bit in too much of a fast pace here. We got to figure out how we're going to move the traffic around. Do we listen to the people about what they want? You know, or are these plans already a done deal? I'm looking at East Norwalk, I'm looking at Connecticut Avenue now. Richards Avenue is going to, is looking at some, a big religious development there. You're looking at all kinds of cramming, all kinds of people into the city and without a plan of what school we're going to, how the water quality is going to go. Can, is the sewage treatment going to handle it? Are roads are taking a beating? And we just got to figure out which, you know, how big do we want to be? Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you. Good evening. I think when we look at or talk about the topic of development at the forefront of that list has to be accessible and affordable housing. Having a, a, a comfortable roof over your head is the very start of having a great quality of life. And that's what we need to be focused on here within Norwalk. We have a plan of development and that plan is a living document. We have to constantly assess what can we make available? We need to have housing that allows people who live in Norwalk, people who work in Norwalk to live comfortably and give back and invest their dollars that they earn each and every day within Norwalk. So we start off with housing and then we look at opportunities for corporations, small businesses as large to move into Norwalk and thrive. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The rest of the candidates answering this question will get 30 seconds to answer. Ms. Britton.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of the statements made by some of my colleagues here, but I believe we need to have development that pays for itself. I would not be encouraging these tax credits that we've got stretching from the base of Water Street up to Route one. Some of these tax credits carry for seven years. In the case of Poco, it's 15 years. So we have to have developments consistent that the pays for itself and it's consistent with being able to fund our school system, which is now 60% free reduced lunch. We also need buildings that are not so fortress driven that face inward. It takes away from the streetscape, it takes away from aesthetics.
I'm afraid that's time. All right. Mr. Goldstein, Goldstein?
Goldstein, thank you very much. As a member of the zoning commission, I can tell you firsthand that Norwalk is growing smartly. In fact, we've worked very hard to make sure that neighbors retain their character and charm. That's why we're not building a skyscraper in Cranberry. But very simply, I live in an enterprise town and I'm proud to live in an enterprise town because Norwalk has made sure and made the investment in developing in areas that had not been able to be developed before. And Norwich's population growth of 6.5% over 10 years is healthy and it shows that it's a place people want to live and it's a reflection of the successes of the Willing and administration. And that's why the Democrats' path to ensuring equitable and fair development is important and why she should support us in the upcoming election.
Okay, thank you. That's time also, Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you. You may have read today that Norwalk was just voted by livability.com as the 59th most livable city in the entire country. That's something to be really proud of and tells me that we're moving in the right direction. My vision for the future of Norwalk development is, is just a livable, walkable, sustainable city where development is focused around the transit oriented districts. We improve public transportation so that we can move people around and decrease traffic. And, you know, just moving towards continuing with the vibrant development in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Najelski-Eichner?
Thank you. So, you know, to build on things that my colleagues have said, you know, one of the areas that I think we have a real opportunity to focus on here is the sort of missing middle. Housing that is affordable for people who work in the city, for our teachers, for our fire off firefighters, and really focus on the ways that Norwalk has always been a city that is home to a diverse population that allows people to flourish here from a variety of backgrounds and that supports people who want to be small business owners and yet can afford to live in the place that they work. So I think that's a tremendous opportunity to invest as we plan our development for the coming decade.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. When I think of development, I'm thinking of green construction and baselines. So we avoid, avoid a more expensive fix in the future, knowing what we know now about climate change. And not just energy efficient upgrades, but low impact development practices moving forward. So we have walking and biking infrastructure that is really conducive to being used. You know, our current reality is likely very different now than what we planned for 10 years ago with climate change. So we have to adapt quickly and then plan for our current reality, given what we know now about climate change's effects in our city. And while doing that, we also will make physically conscious decisions with our shared resources. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I take it, Mr. Santiago has not shown up yet? All right. Next question again goes back to group one. This time we start with Mr. Boninvent. What do you suggest the common council and Board of Education should do to build more trust and to work more collaboratively?
You're on mute again.
Yes, Mr. Boninvent?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted there. Well, one of the ways you can build the trust is when the common council sets the cap on the budget and it's based on what the Board of Ed said they're going to spend it on, you hope that the Board of Ed spends it on those kind of things. And stuff like that has brought a lot of mistrust over the years. However, I think that there's not that much animosity between them. They all know what, everybody knows what they're trying to do. All of us support a better education, supporting the schools. We've done all that, right? Over the years, the common council is always, whether it be Democrats, Republicans or independents or other parties, they've always supported education. All right. So mistrust is a funny word. I wouldn't say they mistrusted, they just expect a value for the product they give them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burnett?
Yes, thank you. The past is the past. I think we have to look towards the future and I think we are working collaboratively. The, the current council and Board of Education, we agreed to do an efficiency study where we're going to look at the operations of the Board of Education as well as the city, identify key recommendations and for the betterment of the Norwalk. It is not, the Board of Education budget is not the city of Norwalk budget. It's one Norwalk budget. And we work collaboratively currently. We have joint meetings where we share information. We have open dialogue about how spending should take place. So I believe we are on the right track with the current administration that's in place to share important information and ensure that the resources are available. We all want to see the final goal, which is a first-class excellent education for all students here in Norwalk.
Okay, and Mr. Merlusi?
On education, I am, I'm willing to work. I'm new to local politics. It's my first time running and I'm, I'd like to work with all sides on that. I know that the schools can always be better. That's the thing about America is, you know, a kid can come from South Doorwalk and rise to the very top. And so the education quality has to be good. I don't know exactly what those solutions are, but I think we could always be better on development and, and construction and transparency. I, I just, and I get the feeling that, you know, like the people that are running this town, we are building a ton of stuff and, and there's a lot of resentment over that. And I think, you know, I don't know if that means slowing it down, slowing the process down. I've talked with a lot of small business owners that, you know, have taught, have told me stories about being pushed out or tried to push out, you know, by, because they wanted to put up an apartment building or they wanted, they did them domain on them. So, and I also spoke with the, the residents at Cranberry Park felt like the Cranberry School was, the residents surrounding the school were, were pretty upset that, that they were given only five days lead time over, over that project.
That's time. Thank you. Now for 30-second answers going to Ms. Britton.
Yes, thank you. I think, I don't think that there's a distrust between the common council and the Board of Education. What I think there is, is a, a, a not an honest conversation within Norwalk about how much we're shortchanged in terms of our state funding. When my kids were in the school system, we were 23% free reduced lunch. That was '05, '06. We are now over 60%. It's costing more money to, to educate our, our children with higher needs. And that just doesn't seem to be a conversation anybody in Norwalk wants to have. I think this is one of the problems of single party rule, both up in Hartford and here in Norwalk. We sweep this under the carpet.
I'm afraid that's time. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you. I, I agree with a lot of what my colleagues said. I think that open and honest communication is always the way forward. And I agree with the sense that it's not a matter of distrust. But I also think it's important that, like our common council, our Board of Education is a diverse and an accurate reflection of what Norwalk is. And then Colin Houston, Cara Baiki, Janine Randolph and Sherry Brown, they make up a great candidate and a diverse slate of people who are going to add unique perspectives to the Board of Education. And I always think a renewed interest in, in, in our, in our education system is important. And that's why I think it will help in the opening, the open and honest communication between the two bodies.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you. You know, over the years, I have seen some distrust between the Board of Ed and the common council. But I do think that's improving. I, I agree with Mr. Burnett on that. It's improving and we have increased collaboration openness between the two. I have been able to contribute to that, being a former teacher in our public schools. I have a unique perspective. And I have worked to, to meet with Superintendent Estrella as well as the mayor and, you know, just to continue moving us forward for the, for our kids. We have great schools and I'm, I'm proud to be helping in that arena. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Najelski-Eichner?
So, you know, again, to follow on some of the things my colleagues have already said, I think that the, you know, there's a real commitment among the common council candidates to our schools. And I think that's the baseline that we all begin from. We all agree that our schools are crucial to our city's future and to our kids and we need to work together. I think from, you know, me personally, I come in without much of the history here. And so I'm ready and willing to work, to engage, to trust people from the get-go because I know that we all have a shared goal and heart, which is, you know, what's best for our kids. And I think we have a lot to build on. There's been a lot of work done over the last few years. Credit to Greg and Barbara for, for beating that process.
All right, and Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I take great pride in the relationships I've built since I joined the council in 2020 with the Board of Education members. And I will continue to build those relationships with the Board of Ed members, including new Board of Ed members this November. I also think that the council could benefit from the establishment of either an education caucus or subcommittee. So those of us who care deeply about these issues can talk about it as a council. So we're better prepared for conversations around the budget. You know, I will continue to support public education funding for greater equity because it's really the greatest return on investment we have with our children. And so what that means for us is moving forward into our future.
All right, that's time on that one. Thank you all. Next question goes back to group one. It starts this time with Mr. Burnett. The digital life affects all of us in all aspects of life. Do all residents in our town have sufficient access to digital resources? What should be the role of the common council regarding digital access?
Thank you. I, I think as we look not, if we look at Norwalk, if we look across the country, there is clearly a digital divide in terms of access to information. And, and lack of access to information, digital information has a trickle-down effect in terms of how people receive information, how they have access to job opportunities, how they have access to information related to their child's education, job opportunities, living locations. It goes on and on. And we have a responsibility as elected officials to look at all means to provide a level playing field for everyone within our city. We have already started to look at how we could have digital access across all of Norwalk for all citizens. We've engaged with the school system. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's time. Mr. Merlusi, same question?
I, yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a big issue and it's clearly been a big issue over the past year now. I mean, how much of that divide is going to disappear as kids return to school and things return to normal, hopefully sooner rather than later? But, yeah, there's no question that how we live through technologies is increasingly becoming a common language, just like English is a common language. And so when people can't speak that language, they get left behind. So I, I don't know exactly what the solutions are. I mean, people should have access to internet. And there's no question that whatever digital divide there was, it's been magnified over the past year. So I think that's a question that needs to be considered and addressed potentially.
All right, Mr. Boninvent?
Thank you. As far as like Norwalk and a digital divide and who's left out, I'm not sure I know anybody who doesn't have access to the internet. I see, you know, kids have phones. I think almost everybody has some kind of digital phone or, you know, I, I'm just trying to figure out where, like, who's missing? Who's missing out here? All of our school kids are provided with a Chromebook so they can do their homework and it has digital access on it. They, they all come out with 5G. So every school kid has access to the internet to do their homework. All right. As far as senior center, seniors, most of them all have like the internet. I mean, if, if they don't, we can help them out. But I honestly don't know anybody who doesn't have a chance for internet access. All, all parts of the school or all parts of the city are all wired up and everybody hasn't, has an opportunity to be there. You know, if, if somebody's poor, they will help them out.
All right, that's time. Thank you. All right, 30-second answers on this, starting with Ms. Britton.
Can I have a question, a clarification, Ms. Moderator? When can we do our, our rebuttals?
Oh.
Supposed to rebut, that's, I was.
I apologize.
And is it at the end or should I have done it with the last question?
I apologize. I should have asked for rebuttal on the last question. Did you want to rebut on the Board of Ed Common Council cooperation question?
Yes, I did. I just had, I wanted.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I wanted to, there's been a lot of talk about equity when it comes to our school system. And this has been something I've championed probably for 15 years. And that is equity begins with funding. And what a lot of Norwalkers probably don't know is that on a per student basis, Norwalk students get $938. Hartford gets $10,000 a student. So it's not, there's $200 million going to Hartford and there's $11 million for Norwalk. And so in all the things that we want to do for our students, that's where our funding problems begin and end. And that's all I wanted to make clear about that is you can't talk about equity unless you talk about funding and that starts at the state level.
That's, all right, that's time. All right, are there any other rebuttals on that Board of Ed question? If not, Ms. Britton, you now get 30 seconds to answer the question on the digital divide.
The digital divide, yes. Um, basically, I tend to agree. Everyone's got a cell phone right now and you've got access to data. Obviously, it can be better. We can improve our wifi and what have you. But I think it's the information you have access to. We seem to be very good as a city in terms of recording parking tickets and building permits. We don't share a lot of information on housing, like that we have 14% affordable housing versus our neighbors that have 2% or 3%. We don't share our data on disengaged youth. We have a very high disengaged youth component. Our tree canopy is lower than Stanford and Danbury. And so there is a lot of performance data that I think it's as much not access, but the information you have access to.
Okay. Same question to Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you. A lot of people have talked about digital divide in terms of Chromebooks and access, especially for published tenants, which is an important point and I agree with what my colleague said. But I also want to talk about something that hasn't been discussed, which is that I was walking in West Norwalk yesterday and the digital signal, when you walk around certain areas, especially the more rural areas in Norwalk, are, is really not up to par. And we can do more to fix this. Digital divide is not just about our urban core, it's also about the suburban areas of the city too. And making sure that everyone has equal access to the internet, making sure that everyone can access the internet safely. Because if you get stuck in Cranberry or somewhere out there, somewhere out in the more rural aspect of the city, that is a potential safety issue and that's something we should look into and fix.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I do think that the common council has supported funding for the digital divide because there is a digital divide. You know, many of our, our students who live in areas where there is not high-speed access do not have the same ability to get their homework done, especially during COVID. So the city was able to provide Chromebooks for the students. We partnered with, we had partnerships to, to create a family navigators program, partnering with Altice to bring high-speed internet to some of those areas where we really needed it and also by support funding for our libraries.
Thank you. Ms. Najelski-Eichner?
Barbara stole my thunder. The very last, first thing I was going to say is our libraries are tremendous. I think that they are an under-celebrated resource in this city. I use them all the time. And I think that they really need to be applauded for what they've done to provide digital access, the way that they provided kids with resources during COVID and set up special stations for them, the work that they do to reach out to seniors and other folks who need access to computers, who need assistance in figuring out how to use computers, the way that they've been the place to go if you need help with your, with your ballots, with your filing, your applications. And I think our libraries really should be celebrated and invested in. They've been one of the city.
I'm afraid that's time, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. And like Barbara and Nora, I'm proud of being able to support those Chromebooks for students in the family navigator program, Dalio Funding and that unique partnership. You know, access to the internet should be like, just like clean water and power and all Norwalkers should have it. And so unequal access during COVID just made very clear that so many families, not just loss of in-person learning and livelihoods, but basic necessities and the internet enabled them to meet some of those needs. So I think that we need to see the internet as another part, an important part of building our infrastructure here in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Any rebuttal on this one? All right, thank you. The next set of questions will start with group two. So group two gets a minute each. The question will start with Ms. Britton. The city has sustained or maintained a cooperative working relationship with our two taxing district water companies for many years. With future city development plans, including increasing our population, how do you plan to balance the role of utility watchdog and collaborator with climate change and extreme weather conditions coming?
Well, I live in South Norwalk and there is, I am concerned about climate change and flooding. I'm concerned about the infrastructure and our sewer system and our water system. Just in my neighborhood, we found out in terms of the sewer system that there were, there was a sewer line that was connected to nowhere. We have been a little bit, you know, we're an old city. We've been a little bit sloppy or casual with, with, with some of the things that we've done. And so adding all these people is going to put more strain on, 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 on the infrastructure and in terms of our water quality. You're seeing this with a lot of brown water that's been showing up. There's been reports that shows up on next door Waiton where people were complaining about the water coloration. And so I am concerned we're bringing in too many people and our sewer systems, our drainage systems are under a lot of threat. And so it's, it's going to be a tough balance. And that's why I think we need to put a timeout on a lot of the density that's being. And so it's, it's going to be a tough balance. And that's why I think we need to put a timeout on a lot of the density that's being developed. Because I don't think we can necessarily handle it. And again, we're a 300 year old city that was put together in a variety of different taxing districts with different levels of, of infrastructure capacity and quality. It's going to be tough.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you. I, I take the issue with a lot of what Lisa just said because one thing is, let's make one thing very clear. Climate change isn't coming. Climate change is here. And, and you see that in the, in the excess funding in West Norwalk and the five mile river, you see it in Roway. And, and a lot of the issues with climate change that, you know, especially sent from making sure, you know, and in terms of making sure that, you know, our climate infrastructure is as smart as possible. Informally, I think what we need is a climate action plan, and I'm not the first one to think of this for sure. But we need a plan to make sure that we marshal our resources, including the, the American Rescue Plan Funds that have just been committed to Norwalk, to make sure that we build our climate infrastructure, to make sure that things like, you know, people's basins flooding and, and, and excess damage. I mean, even here in South Norwalk where there are tidal overtures, we can fix these problems or at least make them a lot better. The other thing I want to note too, in terms of strain of infrastructure, and just seeing this as a member of the zoning commission, when there's, when a development gets approved and especially runs through the process, one of the things they do is they check with the water department to make sure that it's not a strain on the structure. So, you know, this, thank you.
Sorry, that's time. Ms. Smith.
Yeah, so I do agree with Josh very much on this, that what we need to do is build on green infrastructure and create a climate action plan because climate change is here. And we are seeing the effects of flooding and, and other devastating effects, especially the flooding though. But by boosting up our green infrastructure, we can address that. I do want to make one point that water efficiency, the water efficient new buildings, we are using less water as a city than we were in 1985. So, and that's because of green infrastructure. Oh, do I think I, am I 30 seconds or am I?
30 seconds to go.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
All right. Now the other answers will be 30 second answers. Go into Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
So I will agree with my colleagues, Josh and Barbara, on the fact that one, we are actually not at capacity. Our water treatment plant can handle double the capacity we currently have. So the issue is not capacity. The issue is efficiency and preparation. The issue is long-term planning so that every decision we make now is preparing us for when things do become harder. Cause as everyone said, climate change is already here, but it's also going to get worse. And we have this opportunity now to start investing, preparing our stormwater drains in particular, to be thinking about where we're placing sidewalks, how we're building parking lots, how we're allowing developments so that the goal is to reduce flooding in the future.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Yes, I'm proud to have been the first to propose a climate action plan for the city of Norwalk back in early June. And I think that it's necessary for many reasons, like my colleague suggested. We need to plan for the future and be forward looking and long-term thinking on this. There's all the more need for innovative response to this flooding, such as low impact development practices. And we have to manage and treat stormwater at its source and at multiple locations as it moves through our landscape and our city toward the sound. And that's another thing, our water quality, especially at the head of the harbor. We need to make sure we can mitigate wetland loss up there and mitigate against the rising seas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's time. Mr. Merlusi.
I think some of this goes in, in line with some of the zoning. I think, you know, a lot of the construction that increases road runoff, runoff from parking lots, that increases flooding. There, there, like there, there are not a lot of trees in town. I live in Silvermine and you can tell that the houses that were built in the seventies, my house is 1920, so it was built on better land. You wouldn't build those. I mean, the flooding we got earlier in the month was seven and a half inches. The flood of 55 was 12 and a half. So I think zoning and planting trees can mitigate a lot of these flooding effects. And yes, we need to prepare for climate change, but there's a lot of simple fixes that we could do.
All right, Mr. Bonnafet.
Thank you. Everybody pretty much covered the infrastructure and the flooding part of it. But the people in the first taxing district can thank me because they wanted to restrict you from watering your lawn. And I pointed out like, the first taxing district says nothing about all the overdevelopment going on in the city. So don't tell me I can't water my lawn if you don't say something about all the extra development and all the, all the water needs that we're going to have from our reservoirs that are limited. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Burnett.
Thank you. When we're addressing climate change, it's not going to happen by itself. It, there has to be a strategy, there has to be a plan, there has to be embedded in everything that we do. When we, any development that takes place, the same way we, we think about the question of where's the electricity coming from? How, where's the sewer system coming from? We have to include in that line item, climate change and the impact of climate change. We have data points that we can easily point to, to see the impact of any work that we do. And that has to be embedded in the focus.
And that's time. Thank you. I'm afraid that this question is going to be the last one before closing, given the time constraints. It will start with Mr. Goldstein and it is, what is your position regarding housing development? There are many people speculating about the impact on infrastructure. Is there some alternative to more development that would still allow the city to thrive?
So very simply, I, I sit on the zoning commission where I get to see this firsthand. Norwalk is developing responsibly and you see that in two different ways. One, there is a lot of vetting and questions at the zoning commission and the planning commission and a number of commissions that have aspects in every application go through before an application gets approved. Other, the other thing is that developers are required to provide infrastructure additions, just as my colleague Barbara Smith said, you know, that we have a reduction in water use because our pipes are better. And very simply, a lot of that infrastructure is, is important. The other thing I would note too about populated, you know, and the zoning commission is also pushed back and I don't know if you saw, I mean, the recent application in Norwalk Place, Norton Place in East Norwalk. And, and of course that application didn't come to a vote, but you know, the reason that it didn't come to a vote in large part was because they were having difficulty answering questions about traffic. And so if smart, responsible development that takes into account character and, and aspects of the neighborhood and asking the tough questions is something that we all should be committed to doing, is something I certainly was committed to do in the zoning commission.
Ms. Smith.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What is your position regarding housing development? There are many people speculating about the impact on infrastructure. Is there some alternative to more development that would still allow the city to thrive?
Well, I do think that we do need to continue with smart development because we continue to have a dearth of housing. And as we do so, as we increase housing, the rents will go down. That's something that we hear a lot of complaints about. But as we continue with our plans, we have to focus on green infrastructure that will help. But I think most importantly, and this is something where I think we, we're falling short on right now, is to increase public transportation, mass transportation. We're focusing the development on the transit districts. You know, we're not going to, you know, it was said earlier, we're not going to build a giant apartment building in the middle of Cranberry. We're focusing in those areas. So we need to boost our trains, our buses and other forms of public transportation to reduce the traffic.
Okay, Ms. Britton.
Okay, I believe the question was, are there alternatives if we think that we're putting a strain on our, on our infrastructure? I tend to think we are putting a strain on our infrastructure. I'd like to give a bit of a timeout in terms of these large fortress apartments and I certainly would stop with the tax credits because the tax credits are hurting our, our property tax base and not allowing us to fund our schools in other parts of the city. You know, the school system is 52% of the budget. If you add in our, our debt service and another 10% in pensions, like I said, it doesn't leave a lot. We've got about 25% of our budget, of our overall budget to basically absorb all the people that are coming in. So in terms of alternatives, I think we could do more with our downtown area and the Wall Street area. We've had, Poco has starved that part of town for almost a decade, not bringing in revenue. We don't make our permitting processes easy. We've gone for, we've seemed to be in love with big, big giant buildings, whether they're big giant apartment buildings or big giant buildings in general, big malls. And basically, one things that folks don't understand is the sales tax goes to Hartford. It doesn't come to Norwalk. We've got the Costco's, we've got the Walmart's. Basically, alternatives, we need to, we need to get a portion of the sales tax.
All right, 30 second answers, same question, Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
So, you know, a city as vibrant as Norwalk is vibrant because there's growth, because there's change, because we have 400 years of history that has been a history of change. And I think that we need to be responsible, we need to be thoughtful, we need to be looking strategically. We need to be building in our transit oriented districts if we're going to be increasing density. But at the same time, I think that that is something to be celebrated, that people want to live here, that this is an exciting, vibrant place. And that does require people. If we want our small businesses to thrive, if we want Wall Street to thrive and Sono to thrive, we need people to go to those restaurants, yeah, visit those stores.
Time. All right, Ms. Johnson.
I think what's so important is to listen to our residents and be open to strategic growth that lays the groundwork now for our green infrastructure of the future. And so I've been really happy to hear what a lot of residents have said in these zoning conversations. You know, we have to achieve these goals such as affordability and climate resilience and think about the city we want to pass down to our children and grandchildren's generation and what that looks like. Everything from how we get access to food and, and food, healthy food and food deserts to where development goes, what it looks like and how fast it happens are based on these decisions we'll make now. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Merlusi.
It'd be a curmudgeon, but I don't see a lot of smart intelligence in a lot of the zoning recently. I didn't think the things are just propping up without rhyme or reason. And I think it runs counter to the character of the town. And I think it decreases the amount of the local environment and harms that as far as tree coverage and flooding. And it stresses our infrastructure. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see you change your direction and more diversity brought to the common council. Thanks.
Mr. Bonnafet.
I had a concern the way I heard the planning and zoning, their, their idea about everybody gets to build an accessory apartment detached. And I'm asking them like, well, where are you going to park all the cars that'll be fighting, fighting for spots all over the place? And their answer was, well, we're going to let people pave over their front yards and, and use that for driveway and that, that'll alluviate the parking problem. That didn't sound too good to me. Thanks.
All right, and Mr. Burnett.
Thank you. Accessible and affordable housing, to me becomes an entire equity issue that we need to ensure that that's at the forefront of all development that we do. But one point that I wanted to point out quickly is how about solutions and incentives for home ownership? Let's give people the opportunity to invest and not simply live in an apartment, but buy a home and build equity and build an investment within Norwalk. That's one area that I didn't hear too many comments on, but homeownership is really important.
Right, thank you. Is there anybody who wants to deal with 30 second rebuttal on this? All right, at this point we go to closing statements, two minutes each. And by luck of the draw, we start with Ms. Smith.
First, thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum tonight, giving us this opportunity. I'm a mom of three Norwalk Public School graduates, a retired Norwalk Public Schools teacher, a grandma, a resident taxpayer for 22 years. I've been deeply honored and grateful to serve the city I love as a member of the Common Council. And I'm a committed public servant with no agenda other than to serve my community with honesty and integrity. I continue to believe we need more women's voices at every level of government. I think back to two years ago at this forum that was at City Hall of 15 candidates, I was the only woman. So there's four of us here tonight. So, so we're getting there. I currently serve on the Common Council Planning, Public Works, Land Use and Building Management Committees. And I'm Chair of the Community Services and Personnel Committee, of which I'm particularly proud to work with Lamond Daniels to improve the quality of life for our residents in need and to work toward an equitable and just city. I've also advocated for performance valuations and fair pay for our city union and ordinance employees. I believe in keeping public discourse positive and respectful. When it comes down to it, we all want the same things really, things that I fight for on the Common Council. A financially healthy city that offers top quality schools, fair taxes, responsible development and redevelopment, entertainment and culture, a great park system, good services for our elderly and disadvantaged, and a sustainable green city prepared for the effects of climate change. We might differ on how we get there, but when we work together, we can accomplish these goals. We've got to base our opinions on, or base our opinions and decisions on facts and research, listen to different perspectives, do our best to be open minded and flexible and treat each other with respect and kindness. It's a simple thing. And by doing that, working together, we can get there. And I hope I can count on your vote to keep Norwalk moving vibrant and moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
You, so, you know, I am running to work together collaboratively, thoughtfully, strategically for Norwalk's future. This is an amazing city. This is a city that already has a surprising amount of unanimity, I think, about its future, about the fact that we are committed to our schools. We are committed to addressing climate change. We've already begun to build the tools that we need to work on these issues. We've invested in our schools over the last few years. We have built a community that believes in investing in our schools. We are committed to the idea that all of our children deserve a world-class education, one that's going to prepare them for our rapidly changing world. And one that's going to challenge them, that's going to meet the needs of struggling learners, that's going to support our teachers to do innovative curriculum, to do the kinds of hands-on learning that inspires students. And that takes investment from the Common Council and it takes collaboration with our Board of Ed and a willingness to work together. Similarly, on climate change, again, it is, I think incredibly inspiring to hear how much unanimity there is and the fact that we need green infrastructure. And we need to be thinking strategically now about how every decision we make is going to prepare us for that future. We've done the groundwork. We've done the industrial zone study. We've got a great city plan. We have a lot of parts and pieces in place coming together. And now is the time for the Common Council to really lead, to put forward a comprehensive plan, to focus on hiring someone who is able to help coordinate all of those resources, keep us focused on that long-term agenda, look to our future so that the city we're leaving our kids is the great city that we have, that we came into, and then they have one to inherit that's even better, safer, stronger, able to survive the water and able to educate all of our children for that future that they want to have.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity to speak to our neighbors about my vision for our city. Now I'm running for reelection so that the next generation of Norwalkers can learn, grow and live with the safety, support and opportunities that they deserve. So I will build on the work I've accomplished in my first term by continuing to make our city government more representative, bring front and center the environmental impacts of all of our decisions and support funding for our schools so our youth are prepared for the future. I believe we do this by supporting families, promoting 21st century job creation, and most importantly, fighting for climate action. So I'm committed to continue to lead on the development of the climate action plan for the city I mentioned, and we've all been talking about, pushing for innovative, equitable job creation, including a small business incubator and entrepreneurship for all initiatives. And continuing to advocate for our working families by funding our city schools for greater equity, including early childhood education and childcare initiatives. Now this is also going to enable even more of our families to get back to work after the pandemic, especially Norwalk women who disproportionately were affected with job loss and taking time out for intergenerational care work during our, the pandemic. I'm a fierce advocate for Norwalk's hardworking families and motivated to work tirelessly today in collaboration with others for a more equitable, livable and sustainable Norwalk. And it's an absolute privilege to serve you as an at-large council member now where I deliver results to the people of our city. I bring a mix of energy and enthusiasm, fresh ideas and new ways of thinking, along with this demonstrated experience. I work hard to be responsive to the concerns and needs of all residents. I build relationships across communities and am accessible to all since I work for you. So I will continue this work with integrity for you and think of your families as I make the decisions that affect us all. So I hope I earn your vote on November 2nd so we can build this future of Norwalk together. And if you'd like to learn more about me and what I care about, please go to my website at dominiquefornorwalk.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merlusi.
I think we need smarter construction and greener thinking brought to the council. I think, you know, a lot of people, we talk about the environment, we talk about climate change and, you know, the last five years or eight years in Norwalk, it just feels like more of a city. And that to me is not green. We can do it in a green way. And I think, as somebody said, we have been doing it in a green way, but I think we need a total rethink zoning and what, and what we want our town to become. I think, I think we have, I think we need to put the brakes on some of this, this new apartment building because I think, you know, there's a lot of people and we need to make sure that we can integrate and all the. and all these people become permanent members of the community here in Norwalk. And Norwalk's a great town. It's, I, I grew up in Darien, so I grew up on the Stanford side, and I always thought of, you know, Stanford was the city, and Norwalk was always kind of like the big town. It was kind of a little bit of everything. You had, we had Rowa, and you had South Norwalk. You had East Norwalk. And it has a nice feel to it. And I think, I think that's been threatened over the past couple of years with all this construction. And this is my first time in government. So, if, if I get elected, I look forward to, to working with all sides. I think we need a lot more balance on the council. It's, right now, there's just one Republican. So, I, I think, you know, I hope people, people like Lisa and, and Bonafant win. And, and I hope we can bring some balance to the council, some fresh ideas, and some fresh thinking. And I look forward to helping Norwalk hopefully. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonnert-Schad?
On mute there. Um, thank you very much. I got a couple of prepared remarks, so I don't forget something. Look, you got five votes in the at-large pool, and please save me one of them, all right? I, I would appreciate that. And I'll throw in a bone, I'll throw in a plug for my colleagues on Row B. I think we got a pretty good team, and we got some good candidates. So, thanks a lot. I served as a councilman under three different mayors, and one of the things that I'm proud of is that I've always looked at both sides of the issue or all sides of the issue before making my decision. I, I didn't, I didn't, pardon? No. I didn't bring my own, I didn't bring my own agenda to the table. I, even though you believe in things and you try to push things forward, you gotta listen to the people. All three of our kids went to Norwalk Public Schools, and it worked out really well. We gotta get a handle on the increasingly dense development, and we gotta look out for that for the schools, the traffic, the congestion, the water quality, the parking, and our health and safety. And health and safety does become an issue in our parks with, there's no enforcement on dog regulations, and all these apartments have no place to walk your dog. So, you just bring it over, over to the park, and not that many people are picking up. That's, that's becoming a bigger issue right now. I look out for all the residents. That includes the taxpayer. You gotta look out for the taxpayer. They're paying the bills. Much of my support comes from being active in the community. President Exchange Club, Southern American Legion, South North Boat Club, North Seaport, Chamber of Commerce, all those. I respect our police officers, fire department, and city workers. And we need to listen to the public. It seems that all these hearings, the deal is already done, and they're just checking off a box where it's an annoying thing, and, and they already know what they're gonna do. So, and you gotta go back to in-person meetings. The Zoom thing, it's been played out, all right?
Right, that's time.
It's time to go back to in-person meetings. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Mr. Renee?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for coordinating tonight's forum. I am thoroughly invested in our community of Norwalk, as I have called this an amazing city, my home, for over 27 years, and have actively been committed to serving the population of Norwalk each state to create a positive and impactful difference. I am honored to have earned the endorsement of the Norwalk Democratic Town Committee and the Working Families Party. This support confirms my unwavering commitment, common sense thinking, and a razor-sharp focus to ensure that the residents of Norwalk will have a community that they will be proud to call home. Running for public office is a challenge that takes energy, enthusiasm, and grit. And I have embraced this challenge, and I'm excited to run for reelection for the Common Council at-large seat. What do I bring to the table? My background includes over 35 years of technical and managerial experience in the corporate sector, developing a skill set to appropriately develop budget decisions and create positive business solutions. I was elected by public vote to the Norwalk Board of Education, where I successfully served for four term, four-year, a four-year term. I was appointed to the Norwalk Board of Health and to the Board of Estimative Taxation, known as the Appropriation Board, where I resided as chairperson. I currently serve as chairperson of the Finance and Claims Committee, and recently held the position of Majority Leader on the Common Council. In each of these positions, I collaborated closely with board members and volunteers to ensure that the community of Norwalk continued to grow and offer an attractive environment for all residents that focused on positive economic, educational, and a healthy way of living. Thank you, and I hope I can get your support.
Thank you. Ms. Britton?
Thank you very much. I want to thank the League for hosting tonight's event. This election is a municipal one. It's 100% Norwalk, and I'm sure you've heard the saying, "All politics is local." Well, if you care about your family, your town, and the future of Norwalk, this is where you act. Your vote will answer the questions. Should the council be more loyal to a political party, the mayor, or to the city that we're supposed to represent? Should Hartford have more say than local residents over what happens here? I'm referring to things like the Walk Bridge, planning and zoning, the regional high school, or pushing property tax credits when we struggle to fund our schools. Our charter says we're a strong council, weak mayor, but is that what you see? I'm running to represent residents. I want to stop the backroom deals, the bullying, the rubber stamping that's become the norm. I want to bring accountability, balance, and communication back to the council because concentrated power has caused transparency issues with decisions made behind closed doors. Private caucus meetings stop public debate on development, density, ordinances, safety, just about everything. Special interests remove balance from Norwalk. 24 out of our 25 major offices are held by one party. Developers and law firms have more influence than residents. The council-approved opportunities zones have been too generous. Tax incentives means revenue needed to run our city with more people won't be realized for seven years, 15 in the case of Poco, leaving residents to pick up the tab. The council's first obligation is to represent constituents. We're supposed to serve the people, not political parties, the mayor, or Hartford. Several candidates tonight helped make us the most densely populated city in Western Connecticut, without considering the impact on our roads, our sewers, our schools, our quality of life, or how we'll pay for it. I want the council to do better. I want transparency, discussion, debate, and advocacy for the people of Norwalk. This is why I resurrected the independent line. Democracy dies in darkness, as does a lack of diversity of ideas, and that's why I'm asking for your vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you so much to the League of Voters. I, as the youngest candidate running citywide, I believe that Norwalk's government should reflect its people diverse in all ages, backgrounds, and beliefs, and perspectives united by a common desire to improve the city we are proud to call home. I moved to Norwalk and, because it is a vibrant, cool, and inclusive city. And in my time, I have hit the ground running. I am so excited to have been a member of the zoning commission, where I've seen the immense challenges we have faced in the last two years. We have gone through an unbelievable series of challenges, of course, spanned by the COVID-19 pandemic. And what we have learned about each other is that we can come together with competent leadership, smart execution, and inclusiveness and compassion for one another. We've learned that we have the capacity to do extraordinary things and do so with ordinary people. But now, it is time to look forward, not backwards. It's time to use the spirit of cooperation and the capacity that we learned from each other to do and fix our climate change problems by making a climate action plan, making our schools the best, not just the best city school district in, in, in the state of Connecticut, but just the best school district in the state of Connecticut. We can do so much more by acting together than divisiveness. I think I am so excited to run on a Democratic team with colleagues who are forward-thinking and have put real detailed plans, and not just complaints, but real detailed plans to show how we are going to deliver for Norwalk. I am so incredibly excited to be part of this team. I'm so incredibly excited to be a citizen of Norwalk. And I look forward and hope I can earn your support. Please vote for Row A and the Democrats in the upcoming election. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank all of the candidates who have appeared here tonight. Now, ladies and gentlemen who are watching, it's up to you. Vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jean, for being our moderator tonight. I just wanted to point out, thank you all for participating. I just want to point out, we've had a couple of questions. This is the first evening. There are a bunch of debates this week. On Wednesday night, we have District A and District C. And on Thursday night, we have District D and District D and District E. You can register for those debates. They are all via Zoom at my.lwv.org. Thank you for participating, and don't forget to vote on November 2nd. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.